I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of March 10, 2025. Iris, Christina, would you please take the role?
Mitchell?
Here.
Najak is absent. Moreno?
Here.
Rigby?
Here.
Gononi?
Here.
Sly?
Here.
Twing?
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Iris. Item number three on the agenda, City Council update. I don't see a council liaison here. We have an update? Council liaison on Zoom?
No update from the councillor.
Item number four on tonight's agenda is approval of our last meeting minutes, the minutes from February 10, 2025. Commissioners, any revisions or comments or questions about those minutes? Otherwise, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes as written.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Moving on to item number five on the agenda, public comment. Iris, Christina, does anyone wish to provide public comment or raise an issue regarding items not on the agenda?
We have no one.
Thank you. Okay. Item number six on the agenda is the general updates for the Commission for Citizen Involvement. I have three Neighborhood Association postcard meetings, and I'll read a little information. The first one is from the West Ridge Neighborhood Association. It is a postcard for their annual general meeting. I think it's together with the Blue Heron one, which I'll read next. It'll be tomorrow, Tuesday, March 11 at 7:00 p.m., and the location is West Ridge Elementary School. On the agenda is representatives from the Lake Oswego School District to talk about the upcoming capital school bond and Q and A. Again, that's tomorrow, March 11, 7:00 p.m. at West Ridge Elementary School. And then I have, the second one is from the Blue Heron Neighborhood Association, and it is the same meeting. They hold them together again Tuesday, March 11 at 7:00 p.m. at West Ridge Elementary School to talk about the school bond proposal presented by the Lake Oswego School District, as well as Q and A. And then for Blue Heron, they will consider joining your neighborhood board. And the final one is from Mary's Landing Neighborhood Association meeting. It is Thursday, March 20. The time is 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and that's the Nathman Building at 17530 Provis Street in Mary's Woods. The agenda, there are four items, report from the board on the first year, two, an update from the city on a representative on emergency preparedness, three, Chris Durkey update on the South Shore Fire Station findings, and then finally, the election of the officers in board for the next year. And that is all I have for the Commission for Citizen Involvement updates, which will bring us to the next item on the agenda, item 7.1. This is a public hearing for LU 24-0029. This is a hearing, a public hearing to consider various proposed text amendments to the Community Development Code. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Boone to state the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a legislative decision, which is generally a policy decision within the discretion of the City Council. The Planning Commission will review the legislative proposal and make a recommendation to City Council. Although a legislative decision may be discretionary, it must comply with any applicable state law, as well as any applicable statewide planning goals, administrative rules adopted pursuant to O R S Chapter 197. A legislative amendment to the Community Development Code must also comply with the applicable provisions of the Lake Oswego Comprehensive Plan. Iris, do we have anybody virtual for this hearing? And for the record, I see nobody in the audience, therefore I'll skip the testimony process. So I would ask the commissioners to please declare if you have any financial conflicts of interest to declare. Seeing none, Senior Planner Evan Fransted with the staff report.
LU, ah, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Boone. Good evening, Commissioners. This is a public hearing for the 2024 Annual Code Amendments. The purpose of the proposed amendments is twofold, to correct errors, eliminate text redundancies, and clarify text, and to implement minor policy changes intended to streamline the permit process and implement City Council goals and priorities consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. For tonight's agenda, I'll go over the project schedule, and this year's code amendment package includes 16 maintenance items and seven policy amendment items. The staff report that provides analysis on the Comprehensive Plan policies that apply to the proposed amendments was published on February 28. Attachment two of the staff report includes proposed amendments with staff commentary. The maintenance items and most of the policy amendments were discussed in detail at the prior two work session meetings, so I'm not going to go over everything that we went over last time. I'm going to go over the important ones that I think will, one you need to make a decision on and one give you an update on. But otherwise, if you want me to bring up any of the previous slides, we can discuss any of the other ones I don't talk about, so just let me know. I will discuss, the two I'm going to talk about are the middle housing land division tract versus easement item that was pulled from the package, and the policy item number seven, which is regarding the definition of detached. No public written testimony was submitted by noon today, as required by code. The Oregon Fair Housing Council, sorry, the Fair Housing Council of Oregon did send a letter after noon today, around 3:00 p.m., which we could not accept due to the deadline issue. That letter will go to the City Council. It'll be part of the written testimony for City Council. They also sent an email last week asking why the staff report did not address Oregon Planning Goal 10, which is for housing. The reason for this is the staff report is because the proposed amendments do not change allow density, uses, housing types, Comprehensive Plan map, or zoning of any property. The amendments do not discourage the construction of housing because the amendments are clarifying the existing standards that already apply. Staff will address, will include findings to address Goal 10 with adoption of findings that will be before you at the next meeting on March 24, which gets me to the schedule. So here's where we are, and here's where we've been and where we're going to go. So we had the work session, the first one was on the number 13, second one on number 13. And tonight, of course, is our public hearing. Next is the PC findings on the 24th. And City Council public hearing on April 15 with possible adoption of findings on May 6. If that all happens as planned, the amendments will go into effect on June 5. Okay, so starting with some of those policy amendments I talked about. As a reminder, policy amendments are the subsequent code amendments that require more research, public input, and discussion. There are seven policy amendments on the agenda tonight. I'll talk about just really one of them. But starting with the one that was removed from the agenda after our last work session. It was previous item number, policy item number three. This is regarding the middle housing land division and if a courtyard or parking should be required to be within a separate tract or easement. The current code allows for either. The concerns raised with last year's annual code amendment was the owners of each cottage may treat the courtyard area as their property, erect fences, or other structures within the private yard. It was noted that, it should be noted that middle housing land division is not required for cause clusters in general. It's up to the applicant. They're allowed to have up to eight cottages on one lot without a land division. Also, a condominium could be created for ownership purposes for each individual unit. Either way, the current code allows for staff to enforce encroachment violations into the courtyard. As we talked about, staff is recommending that we keep the code as is and allow for the developer, the applicant, to choose what they want to be an easement or tract. And we move forward with that, and that's why it's not discussed in the staff report. It's not really discussed tonight. I assumed, I thought we were going to have public testimony that would raise this issue and ask that it be put back on the package, and I guess that's not happening tonight. So I want to move through this pretty quickly. So I have three examples here. So this is, so far, we've had three cottage cluster developments proposed. None have ever been built. Some are working through building permits. Some are getting close, but none have been built yet. This is one on 310G. The green area is a courtyard, and it would be, the cottage is a butt close to the courtyard area. You can see how constrained it is with everything going on with eight cottages, and they have parking, too. This is another example. It's right across the street, also has eight units, no parking. The courtyard is in the middle, and the cottage is closely about the courtyard. And this is another example where they actually have gone through the middle housing land division process. It has not been recorded, it hasn't been finalized, but they did create a tract. The tract is for the parking only. The courtyard is here in an easement, but the cottages, some of those cottages do about the courtyard. So one of the many issues that was identified, and is part of, is the building code that requires a fire separation of three feet from interior lot lines, and that includes the tract. So if we're required to tract, the cottages would either have to be three feet back or include firewalls. And the developers and people who had experience with developing cottage clusters felt that that was overly restrictive, and they encouraged us to keep the code as is to allow the most flexibility. So for the record, that's why we removed it from the agenda, and we're not talking about tonight.
Evan, may I add something to that?
Yes.
The other thing that we're also considering is if you're following state legislation, there are a number of housing bills that are being considered at the state legislature right now as we speak. And one of them is dealing with the courtyard. Initially, they were considering in a legislative concept of not even requiring courtyards anymore. Apparently, that's been pulled out. The latest proposal is that they are going to allow courtyards or what they're calling community amenities, which have not yet been defined. So there's a lot of change that's happening here. So the other issue that we have is adopting more of these courtyard standards is not a good idea with everything that's within flux with the state legislation. And while we totally understand the concerns, and we actually share some of the concerns of the neighborhood, we can enforce any encroachments regardless of whether it's an easement or in a tract. And until things become more solidified and settled with regard to housing and what's happening at the state legislature, we just don't think it's the right time to be making these changes. So just thank you for a little bit further explanation on that.
Okay, so moving on to really the only agenda item you need to make a decision on which way you want to go. This is item number seven, which is the definition of detached. We went over this in detail at the last work session, but as a little refresher, during the 2023 Annual Code Amendments, City Council approved an amendment to clarify the definitions of duplex, triplex, and quadplex to assure that units are physically attached along a common wall. 25% was approved. During the hearing, some councillors discussed that the definition of detached was confusing. City Council directed staff to research the definition of detached and see if it should be further refined as part of this year's code amendments. The definition of detached requires a horizontal separation of three feet or more between the subject structure and nearby structures. For example, if a garage is less than three feet from the primary structure, measured eve to eve, then the garage is considered in addition to the primary structure. This is important when determining setbacks, maximum floor area, and lot coverage calculations. The definition of detached was created in 2013. As I talked about last time, the staff commentary noted that the purpose of the definition is to require a separation distance that is meaningful in terms of visual separation between structures, and that three feet is a distance separation for structures by the building code without firewall requirements. Staff also noted that the required three-foot separation would prevent two buildings from being detached technically and therefore benefiting from accessory structure setbacks for one of them while appearing visually as a single mass because they could be only inches apart. Staff finds the definition of each specific housing type approved into last year's code amendments. The general definition of detached only applies to accessory structures, not between housing units. Staff is proposing two options to refine and provide clarity with accessory structure definition. So the first option, first option removes the definition of detached and adds language to the definition of accessory structure to require no structural connection to the primary structure, excluding breezeways and the rest of them there. Staff finds the definition of detached is confusing for the public to apply and for staff to administer. It is counterintuitive to define a structure as attached when there's no physical connection between the structures. Staff has experienced difficulty with applying the definition of detached when measuring distance between structures from eve to eve, which are often different heights. Other considerations are that the resulting development includes a three-foot area between the two building eaves that's mostly unusable space, often paved, and limits development on constrained sites. The minimum three-foot separation is commonly used with accessory structures in order to qualify for reduced regard setbacks and to bonuses to maximum floor area and maximum lot coverage. For example, a rigor setback for a primary structure in the R10 zone is 30 feet compared to 15 feet for an accessory structure. So if they detach it, they can have a less setback, and then they can use it accordingly. Conversely, the definition can also be used to attach an accessory structure to take advantage of the primary structure allowances. There's a maximum floor area size for accessory structures. If it's over 18 feet in height, then it is 600 square feet. If it's under 18 feet in height, it can be up to 800 square feet. If you attach the accessory structure, it's no longer an accessory structure, then there's no maximum floor area. It's just what's allowed per the lot for all structures combined. Let's see. I should probably go back one more second. No other city's research uses a three-foot separation metric to define attached versus detached. Staff submits that the minimum separation of three feet is not sufficient distance to truly provide meaningful visual separation between the structures. Option one fixes the confusion by requiring a structural connection that is a common requirement used by other cities, which will be familiar to builders and architects. No require three-foot separation. By not requiring three-foot separation, there are more building layout options on smaller sites and options to provide covered areas under building eaves for walking between structures. It would also have to meet building code requirement, fire separation requirements, and yard setbacks from lot lines. Option number two is simpler. It retains the definition of detached and simply clarifies it only applies to accessory structure in relation to primary structures on the site rather than the relationship between two primary structures. It does not fix the potential confusion with applying the definition in general and/or provide meaningful separation between structures, but would keep the standard as everyone has used since 2013. And in conclusion, staff finds that, based on the findings presented in the staff report, staff finds approval of the proposed amendments, including either option one or option two for policy item number seven would comply with applicable Comprehensive Plan criteria. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Great, thank you so much, Evan. Appreciate it.
I have a question regarding our last item here, the accessory structure detached, attached issue. So would it be correct to say that option number one does not address the concern that was noted from the past in that an accessory structure could be placed very close to another structure in order to provide a technically accessory, but part of the same visual mass ensemble?
That's correct. Without the separation distance, it could be placed inches from, the accessory structure could be placed inches from the primary structure and still be considered detached if there's not a structural connection.
And so option two is attempting to just say that that detached definition only applies to accessory structures and therefore would address that concern?
No, option two doesn't address the concern. It just clarifies that it doesn't apply between units.
Okay. Well, I'm wondering why not, if the solution is to redefine accessory structure, why not define an accessory structure as being more than three feet away from another structure?
By a different distance?
Three feet or some other distance. I'm just wondering why we're not addressing that concern.
So you're asking, maybe we should put in something that has a more meaningful distance between the structures?
That is what I'm thinking, because as it is, it's sounding like neither of these options address the issue of having accessory structures that appear to be part of the main building. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, I mean, if we keep it the way it is, the three feet would remain. But yes, that's, as I said in my presentation, that's not a meaningful separation. I think you can see that in the photos. I don't think the purpose of this was to increase the distance because that would actually make it less flexible for constrained sites to develop. If we want to go that route, I think maybe a better idea would be to table this item or just go with option number two until we, we're going to come back for the, go to audits here in the fall, and we'll look at any potential barriers to housing, and we could look at that option as well.
And I would also point out that because the state legislature is looking at everything, the state legislature is, one of the considerations, or one of the proposals, excuse me, is that they are going to allow all middle housing units to be either attached or detached. This is something that we just changed, if you recall, in the last round of CDC amendments last year. So this is another reason why adopting new standards is becoming more difficult because we're finding we may have to undo them with what's happening around housing in the state legislature right now. So I'll just point out that we may have to come back in the next round and change our definition of, or at least for middle housing, to allow them to be attached or detached. So we could certainly revisit this at that time, too, if you decide to, say, go with option two, which, as Mr. Fransted noted, would retain essentially what our current policy is with regards to accessory structures and separation.
Yep, just, you know, my thinking on this is that, you know, we were looking at this in order to, you know, deal with this counterintuitive, detached, attached, but, you know, anyone can look at it and say that, you know, according to the common definition, that that's in conflict thing. But, you know, if this is making another change, which is kind of reversing that, you know, policy direction that was taken previously, then, you know, I don't think it's necessary to make that change.
Miles, are you suggesting this item altogether is removed? Or we go with option two, which keeps the definition of detached, but then just adds that word accessory to make it clear that it applies to accessory structures?
Well, I mean, if, as Mr. Fransted said, that selecting either of these options would, you know, get rid of the protection from having an accessory structure, you know, bare inches away from the primary structure?
Wait, I'm sorry. So if you keep option number two, it would still require the three-foot separation?
Okay.
Yes.
So option two would address that concern?
It keeps it the way it is.
It would keep it the way it is. Okay, I would support option two then.
Let me jump in the middle of this. I'm sorry. I think the distinction between primary and accessory has to do with some setback provisions, right?
Right, well, and maximum lot coverage and maximum floor area. If you're an accessory structure, you get bonuses for those.
So the fact that you have two primary, two duplexes, okay, two primary that look together, those would still be treated, I think, as primary. There's no accessory. So from a building mass point of view, they'd still be treated as primary. It's the accessories that people might be trying to make accessory in order to get, you know, benefit from a little more setback. So I think that's to your issue on should we worry about primaries as well? I don't think you need to, you know, I don't think you need to. It's because they try to use accessories as primaries.
And it sounds like there are going to be changes regarding what we mean by primaries.
Yes, and I'm not advocating doing anything, but that's the reason.
I'm sure there's anyone else, comments, questions, thoughts? Well, we have a question posed to us. I can see that, on deciding which option to go with.
Let me just correct one thing that Planner Fransted said. This isn't the only decision you have to make, okay, this one. Those are the two options that you put into the public hearing package. You actually technically have to make a recommendation to the council on all of them. If you're comfortable with the rest of them, you know, fine, you can make your motion, you know, and once I'll swoop.
And am I correct that we can close the public hearing aspect, and then we can deliberate on if we want to recommend it as is? We want to recommend which option to take?
Right. No more questions for staff, and you close public hearing.
Okay.
And we also have the option of tabling it until we hear what comes out of the legislature.
Recommending it be tabled, I think is the...
Yes, could, but I would just point out that this accessory structure issue is not really being affected by at least the current legislation, the way it's proposed. That is specific to middle housing and whether, for instance, you could attach cottage clusters. Right now, you can't under our current code. Or whether you could have detached plexes, which you can't under our current code. It really doesn't involve accessory structures, so this will at least address that outstanding issue that's we're dealing with right now.
Yeah, this is more about primary attached to secondary, or primary attached to accessory, rather, and what they're talking about in the state is, you know, primary to primary and middle housing.
My suggestion would be, unless anyone has specific questions now from Mr. Fransted, we close the, confirm there's no public testimony, close the hearing, and then we deliberate and we decide holistically, are we going to recommend as is? And are we going to recommend with option one, option two, or tabling? Further questions? Do I have to confirm that we don't have, Iris, no public? Has anyone signed up to testify in person or virtually?
No one has signed up.
And I think with that, the public hearing is now closed, and we get to start deliberations, and there's no more public comment permitted. So it seems to me, unless anyone object, we have one sort of, we have to decide whether we're going to go, you know, we have to decide if we're going to approve the staff report as is with revisions or not at all. And there's a lot in the staff report, which I don't think anyone has objections over, and everyone's good. So let's get that out of the way first. Does anyone have any comments or questions or thoughts on anything other than this definition of detached?
No.
Right. So then, on this one last thing, the definition of detached. You know, do you all want to give your thoughts, where you're leaning? I mean, I guess I'll start, and I think Commissioner Ringby gave his thoughts. I would go for option two, which seems to be doing the least amount, but also clarifying. And, you know, we wait and see what happens with state legislature in terms of understanding that doesn't impact this direct thing, but understanding if the definition of detached or attached gets changed, has to be changed later. But I feel like option two is doing the least amount while still satisfying the goal that's before us.
Does this require a motion and vote?
To recommend that the entire staff report goes to back, and then they give us findings and conclusions, yes, the whole thing requires it. And I think we would say, send it back to us with option two if that's what we vote on.
Typically, when you have these large omnibus bills, okay, you may have agreement or disagreement about some of them, but ultimately, so we would take a straw poll. That's what we've done in the past, and we would reflect that to the City Council, that maybe, you know, five to two on this particular item, if it's three to four on that item. But ultimately, the whole package needs to be recommended, so you have to decide whether you're really ready to move the whole package with the notations to City Council. So to that point, then, I would suggest you go ahead and make a discussion about this one, a straw poll vote on it, so we get that, and then you can move the whole package if you're ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, straw poll. Adopt the package with, I think there's three options. Adopt the whole package with option one. Adopt the whole package with option one on the detached issue, adopt the whole package with option two on the detached issue, or adopt the package but revise to table this, this particular one. Dave, go ahead, start us off.
Listening to what you had outlined made a lot of sense. I took me able to catch on exactly what you were tracking on, but I get it. So I would say with respect to, we don't know quite what's going to come out from what you were saying a little while ago, I kind of agree with what you were saying. Just let's go with option two. It's as minimal of a change as possible until we know more. So I think that's just the safest approach because we just don't have all the information yet.
I agree.
Okay, I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so I think we're consensus that we are going to, well, somebody's got to make a motion, but we are good with the staff report as presented, but using option two on the definition of detached issue. So now somebody's got to make that motion. Move to tentatively approve and direct the staff to come back with...
Did you just make a motion?
No, I don't think I can make the motion.
Well, your chair can make a motion.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And the wording, I think, would be sufficient for another commissioner to say so moved. I mean, you're moving the package with option two, and then we'll prepare the findings.
Okay, so moved.
Let me, I kind of was, I move to tentatively approve the proposal and direct staff to prepare written findings, conclusions, and recommendations, choosing option two on this last detached issue to present to us at the next meeting for adoption.
Okay, now so moved.
I guess take a vote. Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Rigby?
Yes.
Scanone?
Yes.
Sly?
Yes.
Twing?
Yes.
Thank you.
And motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Franz. I appreciate it. Okay, I think that was, that closes our public hearing and agenda item number 7.1. That will move us on to agenda item eight, other business, and we have other, you know, other business tonight. And, you know, I'm sorry to announce it's going to be Commissioner Scanone's last meeting with us. And, you know, well, I'll let you say words, but we're very thankful, Dave, for your time and efforts here and, you know, all that you've done for not only us but the city as well while you've been here.
Well, thank you. It wasn't something that I had looked at a year and a half ago. I thought I was going to, I came in here, this thing's so green, and I would just look over at Eric and just, I have no idea what you're talking about. And I don't think I ever will. And phone calls back and forth, and somebody finally started to find my way, and it's like, hey, this is kind of cool. I'm really enjoying this. And as time went along, I said, well, you know, I'll kind of maybe someday go to one of these chairs over here. But what happened in the process is we ended up trying to expand our house in Lake Oswego and ended up with all kinds of costs, and city didn't like some of the design directions and changes.
What?
So we ended up with the perfect house in West Lynn. So literally 300 feet from the border. So I don't, maybe, you know, anyway, so we now have a house in West Lynn, and the house in Lake Oswego is for sale. And so I just wanted to get it out early, and yeah, you know, Eric, you would give me all these options, I could run out my term and all these things. I figured it was probably better to get someone in, you know, quickly as opposed to me dragging out, even though it's been a total ball of fun to come in and learn so much from everybody. You guys have all been great, and I hate to go. I really do hate to go. My wife said, are you going to cry when you leave? I said, no, not that bad, but close. Anyway, so yes, this is my last meeting. But, you know, I can always come back as a paid consultant.
Of course, yeah.
Especially Jessica. You know, I'm looking on here, it's like, maybe I'll hang out until the tree session comes out, but it's TBD all the way across. So it's like, well, that didn't even go in my favor. So anyway, that's the new business. But it's been an honor to be part of this and to get to know all of you.
Thank you, Dave.
It's been great to have you on the commission, Commissioner Scanone. It's been just, you know, your curiosity and enthusiasm for this work and just kind of your willingness to delve into things and kind of learn along the way has been great, and it's been just really, yeah, it's been a really gift to the commission. It's been great to get to know you and sort of have your role kind of emerge along the way as well. So we'll really miss you, the city will miss you. And yeah, it's, I understand, you know, why you're stepping down right now and not filling out your term, but, you know, you will be missed. So in case you hadn't heard a word, we also have some, or not celebrating, we're celebrating Dave, so some sort of departing cake, I guess, in the break room for us to sort of convene and enjoy after the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Eric, do we talk about replacement, or is that, should we not?
Yeah, I can just mention, you know, basically, you know, when Commissioner Sly was appointed last year during that recruitment process in 2024, we also appointed two alternates for the planning commission. So we do have alternates waiting that can be appointed, so just waiting for word from the mayor on sort of the next steps here. But ideally, we'll be able to appoint somebody by the council's meeting on March 18th. So theoretically, they would be ready in time for March 24th, the next meeting of the planning commission. Of course, this is contingent on a lot of things happening fairly quickly, including orientation for that new commissioner prior to the next meeting. So, you know, a lot of things have to fall in place for that to work out, but it is possible. So stay tuned. I will be keeping you all posted with more information on that, but we're ready to go as soon as we hear word, and hopefully that individual would be ready to come on and take on that responsibility. So again, I'll keep you posted when we know more, but, you know, we do have a process for that, and it would be, you have to bring a resolution to city council as soon as we can. So yeah, I'll be updating you as soon as possible.
Thank you. Okay, item nine, schedule review.
All right. So our next meeting is going to be on March 24th, as I mentioned. Again, hopefully we'll have a replacement for Commissioner Scanone at that point. But I, this isn't reflected on the current schedule, but we will be holding that remotely. I will reflect that in the next schedule. So it will be a fairly light meeting. We'll be considering adopting findings for the hearing that we held tonight, as well as just really wrapping things up for our work plan for 2025. The last work plan review that we held was fairly brief, kind of not too much conversation. So I figured that would be a pretty light agenda item. So that's another reason why I figured we would hold that remotely. So maybe not the ideal, you know, first meeting for a new commissioner for that to be remote, but, you know, it will be a light agenda that day. So yeah, again, that will be a remote meeting. The next meeting will be on April 14th, and that will be a work session on the home occupation standards. We were able to go out, or Michael was able to go out and do a survey, send out a survey to holders of business licenses for home occupations within the city. He was able to get a pretty good response rate so far, something like 120 responses. So pretty robust response rate already, and so we have some information to share with you about what we've heard from that effort so far, as well as some draft sort of code concepts to talk about with you at that work session. So yeah, that's at least what's coming up for you in the next two meetings.
Thank you, Eric. And with that, adjourned.
I was going to ask about May 28.